Robert Mullen is doing better.
Good.
He had COVID.
Didn't he?
And they think this time he's been better.
Lord, thank you so much for this day. And I just ask for...
Over this community, we ask that you give us wisdom and good judgment as we perform the business of the city. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't have anything for public comment. You need to approve the minutes of the September twentieth meeting. You've got a copy of those in front of you.
Um, I would like to note that I was not here on September twentieth. And I think...
Did that what you did?
Yeah, I'm down as present and also voting aye on every... Everything, so... Not, not that it makes a big difference because I agree with everything done, but...
I, I can... We could, I could either correct it and we can vote on it next time, or you just trust it all.
We can, we can do it with that note.
I'm happy to approve it with that note that I was not present.
I move we accept the, the reading of the minutes with the correction of Ben McNabb not present and not voting.
And not voting.
I'll say it.
Got a motion from Zach and a second from Richard to approve the September twentieth meeting. Commissioner McNabb not here. All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Any other sign, anyone know? Alright. Financial report.
If you go to the fifth page in your packet, we'll see the sales tax graph that Larry's across for us each month. We have the information for the first month of the new fiscal year in there. But Larry's gone back and haven't made a comparison for us from ten years ago up there in the top forty's got red. That's the eleven twelve. And you'll see that our total from eleven twelve to our total from twenty twenty-one has increased around five hundred thousand dollars.
No, well, the month is forty-three thousand for the year.
For the year.
At that, at that trend will be five hundred dollars over ten years ago.
That's great.
Outstanding. If you, as I told y'all before, I kind of feel like this is the way we can measure how our city's doing in the last ten years. Uh, that's a heck of an improvement.
Sure is.
Just that one, we know that's forty-three thousand, but we'll see where the rest of it goes.
That's great.
And then also I ran it, if you go a few more pages, go three more pages, you can get to the budget summary for August twenty-one. You'll see that great big surplus in the general fund, but part of that is grant revenue, so we, we don't get to count that. But, uh, I ran the budget summary from last year and our, we, our surplus in the general fund is seventy-four thousand dollars more than it was last year at this time. Of course, that's not including the grant. But the best thing is our utility fund deficit this year is two hundred thousand less than it was last year. So that's good news.
Which shows us we're trending in the right direction with our utility fund.
Anything else, Leslie?
That's all I've got.
The commissioners have any questions? The Board of City Commission will discuss and take action on the following, uh, agenda items. Item number one, discussion consideration of the Fine Arts Association seeking additional hotel motel tax funds to make necessary structural repair to the Majestic Theater. Ryan, you're Jay, Jaten.
I'll do it, I'll do it. I think most of y'all are already aware of what we're looking at, what we need, why we need it. Just need to replace the ropes. We're gonna go back with chains. Reason we're replacing them is because our stage is unsafe to have live performances at the time. Uh, those ropes were put in eighty-seven, they have a life expectancy of eight to ten years. And that was thirty-something years ago. I think most of y'all got to put your eyes on it, see what we're looking at. Uh, it's more than just ropes. We're having to get them out, take everything down, put back up the chain. It's gonna be about fifty, a project. And I think, uh, the ropes cost fifty-three, we still have one on seven. And the last time they gave us some money, so we're looking at around forty-six thousand is what we're asking for. Any questions?
I've always heard the people say something put together with bayonet wire. We can now say that's really true. We have picture evidence.
It's not bayonet wire.
They don't get it with bayonet wire. Anyway, JJ, what are your thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, it's the city's recommendation, we had some funds left over from last year's. Uh, the money that we distribute for projects like this come out of our hotel motel fund, as we all know. Uh, I, it's the city's recommendation that we give the excess funds that we had left over last year, were about twenty-five thousand, to the Majestic along with, um, probably about five thousand out of this year's budget. And the reason I say that is because we just started a new budget. And realistically, we do not have any money in that account at this time. So I think that's a safe, starting place for that. And, um, so I think that we'll get them on their feet, get them moving forward and, uh...
Yes. Uh, what is the remainder today of, of that, of?
The remainder today of...
From the budget and the projects that we've already agreed to fund.
Oh, for this upcoming budget, the budget we're in now.
Well, this is the number we ran.
We do have an excess, I'm not sure how much is...
Is it about fifteen thousand? I mean, I think we had a discussion like that, less than that?
It's, it's actually, we had, in the bu, that budget line item, we have budgeted, we have left, after the historic preservation board that we approved last month, I think is about a little less than eighty thousand that we have budgeted. Now, that money is not there.
Right.
Per se.
Well, how, okay, so eighty thousand was the budget line item.
That we have left.
How much of the eighty thousand has not been spoken for yet, or?
That, that's eighty thousand that we do not have, that is not spoken for.
I see, okay.
Yes, that is the remainder.
We, you know, that's collected through the year. And then we also have not spent the total amount that we can spend on historic preservation. So if anyone else with all the things that are going on, on the square, comes in to ask for a grant, we, we need to have money available for, for that also.
And that will just accrue month after month as it comes in?
Yes. Because essentially what we're doing, just, we're, we're gonna loan them money and then kind of pay ourselves back.
Yeah, and the twenty-five thousand is what remainder from last year that was unused.
Yes.
Twenty-five thousand was in the account that's not used. That, there wasn't that much. There was already money in there.
Yes, that we...
What, we had, so we gave, we had thirty-five. They asked for money, we gave them seventeen-five, I think. And that, because that was half of that. So there's seventeen-five from last year, so if there's twenty-five, the math says there was eight already in there. But let's empty the account, clear out what was already there and help them with that. Give them another five thousand, which is kind of the first month or two getting started. And then as it rolls on, we can do more. We'll have that money available at the end of the year. Uh, if we need to do something with it, we can. But that's kind of the, the idea he's thinking, and I, I agree with that right now.
Yeah, that's being careful.
It's scary when you come at the beginning of the budget year and the revenue's not there yet.
Yeah, not there yet.
Now, we're all, there's no reason for it not to be there, but this is two thousand twenty-one and it's a crazy world.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, we're, we're in good shape and feel good. Thirty thousand would be great, we'd like to do it all, but, uh, I think they're gonna write some grants and do some fundraisers and do some things and get that part going and, and, you know, not to say you can't come back three or four months and we've got a little bit built up and nothing's happening, so we may feel good about it again, but...
I move we give...
That's where he's thinking.
I move we give thirty thousand dollars to the second.
Got a motion from Richard and a second from Zach, give them thirty thousand dollars now. Any other discussion? All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign, motion carries.
That leaves you sixteen thousand remainder to finish the project.
On behalf of Eastland Fine Arts, thank y'all very much.
Well, thank y'all for trying to get that up and going and get those little things fixed. I think we've all, I guess everybody got to go see it and it's a neat place, we all love it, so.
Great y'all.
Thank you for what you do. Thank you. Item number two, discussion consideration approval of the rate fee schedule. You had a copy of a piece of paper on your desk in front of you, uh, that explained a little bit, go ahead.
Really, the only changes we've made to the rate fee and schedule for the year is, um, the cities will not be accepting used oil and filters. It's a service that we have provided in the past, but over the past two or three years, nobody has asked to use that service. And with the EPA starting to crack down to EQ, more and more regulations, I, I feel that it's, should be a city's position just to kind of move away from that. If we find a need for it, then we can go back to it.
We don't need anybody that can pick it up and do it.
Yeah, so. And that, and the convenience center, um, in our fee schedule, we had some, I guess, half dollar, like sixteen fifty in there. The, the men, the people who run the convenience there, they don't carry hard change with them.
Yeah.
So we just rounded and went on, just to make it easier.
Yeah.
That was, that's the only two changes in the fee schedule.
And you rounded it down?
Yes, sir.
I'm impressed.
Yes, sir.
You're obviously new to this job.
I am, yes.
He's a man that uses things.
Good, yeah, yeah. That's a good plan. Any questions? Anybody have anything else?
I move we accept the updated rate and fee schedule.
Motion from Zach and a second from Cecil to approve the updated fee schedule. Any other discussion? All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign, motion carries. Item number three, discussion consideration approval of the firefighting contract with Eastland County.
It's the same contract that we had, um, since two thousand eighteen, it hasn't been changed. We pay, well, excuse me, the county pays us fifty-seven fifty per quarter, um, to, we provide them with fire protection. But it's just, like I said, it's the same contract we've had since two thousand eighteen, it hasn't been amended.
Fifty-seven fifty.
Well, I move we accept the, the county firefighting contract.
Motion from Richard to accept the firefighting contract with the county.
Second.
A second from Ben, any other discussion?
Moving forward, discussion consideration approval dispatch contract with the Eastern County.
Again, um, this is the same contract we've had with Eastland County since two thousand fourteen. Just that they provide us with nine-one-one services throughout the county. Uh, we paid twelve point eight-five percent of that.
That's already in the budget.
That's already there. Yes, sir.
I move we accept the dispatch contract with Eastland County.
Second.
Motion from Zach and a second from Richard to approve the dispatch contract with the county. Any other discussion? All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign, motion carries. Item number five, discussion consideration of second reading, we could approve ordinance twenty-one dash eight-seven-eight, an ordinance that needs to be here and after described territory in the city of Eastland, Eastern County, Texas, extending the boundary limits of the said city limits to include said property within the said city limits. And granting to all the inhabitants of the said property the all rights and privileges of other citizens and binding said inhabitants by all of the act, ordinance, and resolution and regulation of the said city.
This is for the Barti property, as you see, it's the property in red out there at the business park. Um, this will not go into effect if, until thirty days after, if it is passed tonight. Uh, I mean, Mr. Barti's doing, it looks like it's a great building out there.
Sure is.
And the business parks is picking up.
Yeah.
This is a second reading, so.
Yes, sir.
Like the motion that we approved, uh, ordinance twenty-one eight seventy-eight on second reading.
Second.
Got a motion from Cecil and a second from Richard, approve ordinance twenty-one eight seventy-eight. Any other discussion? All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign, motion carries. Item number six, discussion consideration second reading, ordinance twenty-one eight seventy-nine, an ordinance by the city commission of the Eastern Texas, adjusting the amended, adjusting and amending the city's fiscal year budget for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Leslie, correct me if I'm wrong, really what we are amending here is the raises that were given in March for that.
And this is second reading of that evidence?
Yes, sir.
So I'm going to make a motion, but to approve the ordinance twenty-one eight seventy-nine on second reading. Motion from Cecil and a second from Zach to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty-one eight seventy-nine. Any other discussion? All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign, motion carries. Item number seven, discussion consideration of resolution twenty-two-one dash thirteen, authorizing the city manager and mayor to negotiate and execute all leases of hangars and ground space at the Eastern Municipal Airport.
Yes, sir. The city manager to sign all leases, uh, for the airport. As it is now, all the new leases that come up, you gotta build before the permission. I just think it's a better way to be more efficient, streamlined. Uh, if there is a conflict, after consulting with the, the airport manager, it will come before y'all for complex resolution at that time. And if for some reason there is an absence of a city manager for more than two weeks, just so it's not hung up in the air, the mayor will then have the, the authority to sign off all the issues over that hangar.
Yeah, is that why, it says mayor here in the subject, i- is, is that why, is because of that?
Yes.
Two weeks?
Yes, because he, whoever the mayor is, does, will, after two weeks, have the authority.
Yeah. That's good.
I move we pass resolution twenty-two-one dash thirteen. Second.
Got a motion from Richard and a second from Zach to have resolution twenty-two-one dash thirteen. All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same time, motion carries. Number seven, number eight, discussion and consideration of resolution twenty-one dash fourteen, a resolution setting a date, time, and place for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of certain property by the city of Eastern Texas and authorizing and directing the mayor to publish a notice of the same.
Yeah, this is what we did with, uh, Mr. Barti out there at this property. Our first step in annexation of the, of new property, which will be the property in red, directly adjacent to the Maverick Town Homes, uh, four point seven-three, that Mr. Hanson's asked to be brought into the city as he plans further expansion of, uh, the Maverick Town Homes. Uh, all we will do tonight is, uh, set a public hearing for next month at our normal business meeting. Uh, Mr. Hanson will attend the next business meeting, uh, so we, he can answer any questions or concern the council has, uh, over this. Uh, but me and Bobby, Tony, and Mr. Hanson sat down and we looked at the utilities and stuff like that and Bobby is pretty confident that we can make it all work like it needs to be.
We approve resolution twenty-two-one dash fourteen, setting the hearing date for November fifteenth.
Second.
Got a motion from Cecil and a second from Ben to approve resolution twenty-two-one dash fourteen. Any other discussion? All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign, motion carries. Item number nine, discussion consideration approval of GLO contract, do we have?
No, sir.
No, sir.
I spoke to her today. Um, she was embarrassed that, that it was brought up. Uh, she can't get her current phone call at this time from the general land office.
Our plan, our plan, just so you know, is if we get those contracts in, we'll very likely, depending on how far we are away from our next meeting, have a call meeting to get those contracts moved. Because they come in here, we want them done and out of here as quick as possible. So just be aware, we'll contact everybody if that happens. Item number nine will be tabled for the future meeting. City manager's briefing.
Well, we talked about the GLO, um, FIF, so that signs of paperwork, which is the flood infrastructure fund, uh, which does the hydrology study throughout Eastland, kind of goes hand in hand with the GLO. Uh, hopefully they're gonna begin that study shortly. And we got the generator set out of the ground storage tank. We had some people come in with Mr. Copeland, Charles Copeland, the electrician that does a lot of work for the city, to test that generator, just to make sure that when it kicks on, it's putting out the proper voltage and we don't burn up a twelve thousand dollar transfer switch.
Yeah.
So, but everything other than that, um...
You said that test has been done?
Yes.
Or we're waiting to do it? So everything's okay?
I didn't get a call from Charles, so I'm thinking it's good.
Been having fires out on each side of town, right? Good.
Oh, yeah, my, my generator. And we are still rocking and rolling with potholes. Um, the five inches the other day set us back even more. And, um, we're working on getting bids and stuff set up to acquire the Dura Patcher and stuff like that. Um, you kind of want to get this bond refund financing out of the way and push along so hopefully we can get a better deal on one. And that's all, really all I have. Questions?
Anything for JJ? Tony?
Uh, Commissioners, through the month of September, we started with fifty cases open, Terry opened forty-eight new cases, he closed fifty.
Leaving us with four still open for October. Uh, had one junk vehicle with a citation, uh, involved with it. Uh, fines assessed for September were one thousand fifty-five dollars. We did have nine hundred and twenty-four dollars in fines paid. And, uh, citation that was issued was for property nuisance, off-street parking, junk vehicle, unsanitary conditions. And, uh, apparently they put a refund without a permit. And, um, that's pretty much it for code. Uh, now that we're starting to get into fall, numbers are gonna be going down on high weeds and grass and that type of stuff. And Terry will be, uh, going after trash or debris more, uh, in the coming months.
Notice down, South Cali looks real nice now.
Yes, sir, it does. Uh, that, that problem child was taken care of. The city, um, uh, worked with the people that were cleaning that up. We, um, since it was HUD that had that property, we, uh, and they only had two people there working. Uh, they were doing all they could and so to help them speed things up, we got a dumpster for them, uh, at our cost to help get, uh, everything out of there. We had dropped it on Friday, they had it ready to go Monday morning, uh, and we, yes, overflowing.
We're not talking a little...
The yard, I'm sure the neighbors have got to really appreciate that, man alive.
And they're gonna be able, they're gonna be the, the people that clean the property, they're gonna be the ones that maintain the property as well. We've got their names and numbers, so, uh, we'll, we'll get with them.
Are they somewhat local in the general area?
Uh, I don't think they're in the general area, but they, they do cover different properties for them. They're actually working on one on West Moss, I believe. There is another HUD property over there on West Moss that they're working on right now.
Boy, that's great though, man, that's...
And then we've got a new home that's gonna be, a new manufactured home that's gonna be going in down, uh, Bryan Street. Remember the two properties that were next to each other that were in pretty rough shape? The person that, that bought all those properties and tore the buildings down is gonna be placing a new manufactured home down there. And it's brand new, right off the line, so we're excited to have that area keep cleaning up. It's going slow, but it is going.
Yeah.
Great.
Anything else for Tony? Keep going.
Yes, sir. Um, is there, we're into the fiscal year, so you have all those numbers there. The citations, we wound up with twelve hundred eighty-eight for the year. When I direct your attention back to December, we only had twelve written in December because of COVID. And then in the month of September, so those are pretty good numbers for us having a dead month like that. And then in September, we have a hundred and fifteen citations written, three hundred and fifty-four warrants. And that was with two out that I had with COVID. So, you know, yeah, I hope I'm gonna get through somewhere in that deal. The, the other thing I bring to your attention is the toll calls for service jumped to two-seventy. That is the installation of the new CAD system at Dispatch that's recording absolutely everything that's going through there. We're not physically getting the cars, call sheets anymore and then going through, you know, saying whatever. So that two-seventy is a more accurate number than we've ever had before, I think. And so you can see the, the increase. I mean, the, the closest one I had to that before then was back in January with two-forty-four. So we added twenty-six calls, uh, just in the, in the month of December. So I anticipate that our, our calls for service are gonna be high from this point on. And the other thing I wanted to let you know is that on the calls for service, that what's not counted in there is that during that time, uh, because we get a specific report at the end of the month, actually get it every day, but forty-one businesses were checked during the month. during the month. And physically got out, rattled the door, did whatever, walked around that thing, and then remembered to call in and say, hey, I'm doing business checks. So I really feel like there's probably more than forty-one business checks that were being done. We just gotta get our guys, because a lot of times, and Chief Fundenberg can tell you, a lot of times those guys aren't thinking about it. They're thinking about checking the building, they don't think about calling in and saying, hey, I'm out for a building check. So we're kinda trying to train them up so that all our activity's being captured, because we're in that kind of system. So other than that, we had a real good deal. Something else I'm gonna cover later, but Katie Thompson got certified this week as a K-9 officer, so she's legal and good to go and doesn't have to work under McDavid. She can go run the dog on her own, and she brought the dog in, so I could congratulate it this afternoon, and he knocked about twelve things off the wall, and because he instantly bringing in somewhere, he starts sniffing. And I'm like, there's no dope in here. I appreciate you, appreciate your motivation and your enthusiasm, but Katie, I'm visiting enough of the dog.
Break that dog, that takes me to evidence.
Absolutely, this is done.
I'm curious, because I know the fire chief does this. On your two hundred and seventy calls for service, do you have any idea that recording out?
They've got it and they can do it. Your time of day, like a normal eight to five type shift of the evening or nighttime shifts?
Well, here, yes, but you would have to manually, you would have to manually do that. We, the, the, it's called E-Force, is the report that we get. The problem that we're having, and it's a glitch with, with them, not us, is that they go, our shifts go six A to six P and six P to six A. Theirs goes midnight to midnight, which you can work around that. The problem is, is sometimes it drops the midnight to four or five o'clock in the morning off, or it may drop off the, everything after six o'clock in the evening. So we're not getting a full capture of the data that's occurring for that day. So they're still, they're still working out. Sheriff Wager's, every time he just told me, he said, Matt, every time one of those seven look bright, send it to me, I'm sending it to them, and they're, they're working on it, and they're just trying to figure out, you know, what's going on with the deal. That's, that's, that's kind of the deal. But I can tell you, the, our, our day calls, and Chief Fundenberg will back me up on this, our day calls are typically the ones that you get the most of. Night calls, you don't get that many, especially, you know, three o'clock in the morning or whatever, but day calls, I mean, it really puts a strain on us trying to cover the calls, because you've got, you know, Scott McDavid is still has half the patrol division that he's supervising, Lieutenant Wilson's supervising the other half of the patrol, and, but Scott is transitioned to that investigative position now. So, and it's, and it's working out, everything's working out good. But you may have me on a day call, you may have Lieutenant Holmes day call, you may have the day unit obviously on a day call, and so it's, we're, we're stretched. It's like I told you guys last month, I love the city's growing, and we're doing great things, we're running, pulling that rubber band pretty tight. The night guy is really the guy that I'd like to get an additional person for, and that way you've always got two officers working just from a safety standpoint, because it's, it's, like you said, Mayor, it's twenty twenty-one, it's kind of crazy, kind of crazy right now, so, but. But that's our board.
Thank you. Anything else for Chief Paul? Do you question?
Good evening, say, may I, Commissioners? I'm just so excited, I'll borrow a little bit of your time, we put together a PowerPoint just to kind of show some of the activity. Last year, we did it in twenty twenty. On January, we held our elections in December, and I kind of introduced to you guys, the commission and the mayor, our officers, and I'd like to do that again. We've modified our bylaws where our elections are occurring now in September, so that the officers will be seated October one, so that they will have the opportunity to manage one hundred percent of the fiscal year's budget and not take over in the year. So I'd like to introduce you to our officers for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Fire chief is Joe Williamson, myself. Sam Williams was elected to the position of deputy chief, and we'll talk about that in just a second. Kelly Frann was reelected to the position of assistant chief. Brian Keller is now one of our captains, and Charlie Torres is a captain. And that's our command staff, that we keep everything knowing, and we're delegating to managing projects and, and those processes. So here's how the fire department, we've re-modified our organizational chart. Some of this really is mostly due to the paid position, being that the fire chief is now in a paid position, a city employee. So you can see in twenty twenty-one, previously, we had the position of two assistant chiefs, and it kind of put them on a parallel rank and file, and underneath, and then we had a staff captain with staff firefighters. Well, we've modified our organizational chart now, where we have the fire chief, who has a good assistant, so some safety officers, and a public information officer, Amanda Woodley. And then the deputy chief, and then the assistant chief, and it kind of has made our organizational chart a little more linear, where, where we have defined a little better, defined roles and responsibilities, and those boil down to the captains and then, and then the, and then the crews and the firefighters. So we kind of re-did that. The goal there was to put Sam, who was elected position, but was to put the deputy chief into a role to fill in when the fire chief is absent. So he's attending these meetings, he stays present, we meet on, pretty much daily, on the operations of the fire department, where we're going, what's happening. And then also, I, you know, I encourage that, that deputy chief position, be a liaison to the commission and the staff, so that, we're just creating a system of checks and balances, so, so that the voices from the body of the fire department also get heard from the city employee side, and that they shouldn't marry up, should they not? If they don't, there should be some questions asked. So, so we're kind of building this organizational structure, I think, that is gonna serve us, serve us real well in the future. So Walter Williams was our chaplain, Rick Wendy is also our fire prevention specialist, I would like to say, and he serves as a safety officer, and we're in the process of considering to retitle those to safety chiefs. They're not chiefs as far as administration. They're only chiefs when we create a hazard zone in the command system. So by changing their title to chiefs, in the event we were on a house fire, they have the rank and title to do their role and responsibility, which is govern the safety and implement the rules and policies. So it gives them authority. So that's some of the stuff we're looking at for our bylaws to make, make sure it fits real well. Terry Hastings is our protective equipment officer. I think we had talked about this previously. He went through the NFPA eighteen fifty-one certification, and now we are testing, deconning, doing our advanced cleaning, everything in-house. That was being done by a third service party. We were a third-party service, we were sending it out, and now all that, all that processes and, and compliance, keeping us in compliance with the T C, Texas Commission on Fire Protection, is, is taking place in-house. He's doing a fantastic job on that. And then Amanda Woodley, again, I say she's our public information officer, and she also helps Rick, and, and they kind of work together hand in hand on some of the, the fire prevention. She, she helps him with a lot of the scheduling and, and, and those, in those events. So here's just some of the programs and processes. You guys have heard these projects, you guys have heard a lot of these, I mention them over and over, the fire prevention, we're, this is our time of year, this is when we're getting to shine. We had our open house, Citizens Fire Academy is an up, up and coming. We wanna start pushing public safety announcements about addresses and recruitment, retention of our members, our smoke detector program, we got a lot of other good stuff coming. We'll, can't wait to share it with you when we get it, get it built, get it on the road. Here was our nine eleven ceremony. The Eastland Independent School District Administration invited us, it's out, out of Hope County, had us on the football field, and, and this is just some of the pictures of our members who attended. We had the opportunity to participate in the old rent parade, and you can see we turned that into somewhat of a family event, and I think it went real well. This was our open house. This, I left this after we got all this cleaned up. I went home, I, I hadn't felt that warm and fuzzy in a long time. This was a spectacular day. We let kids, at the top left corner, they sprayed fire extinguishers and put out fires. We had an auto tore the car up with the jaws of life, they got the spray. We just had a whole lot of stuff going on, and I think it was a fantastic event, and also the police department made a presence and helped us to, to show the public what we do and who we are, and, and we appreciate that from, from them guys. Right now, these are our fire prevention tours that are going on, we're scheduled up. Some of them, we go to the schools, some of them, they'll come to us. But this was the one we had the other day. This one here, about probably five minutes or so after this picture was taken, engine six was summoned to Secret Elementary for a automatic firearm. So these kids, we safely stacked them against the wall, did an accountability, and we got to pull out, run a license iris. So their fire prevention tour, they got to see the deal, hear the tone go off, the home area, so it was really good. Some of the improvements we've made around the house, we have taken our SCBA field station. That compressor pulls atmospheric air and stores it in the high pressure in cylinders, and from those cylinders, we feel our breathing air. This filter here was historically in the same compartment as we start our motors and engines. So we, you can see, we plugged the filtration system, where now we're actually pulling air from the outside atmospheric air, less contaminants, less toxic environment. So that was a project. Here's a project that we started back, this, this, this door right here is from the second floor bedroom, where the firefighters are sleeping at night. There's an interior stairwell that is a solace of escaping. So we, the volunteers with this, then we split funds with the city, and we constructed a stairwell so that the staff has a secondary means of access. A pole would be lovely, but the insurance on that is outrageous. This is our study library, training, we kind of, we, we, we've, so what we did is we, the volunteers purchased these four computers. Just over here to the right, we have an entire library of the IFST, which is the training manuals, that essentially is DVDs of the entire fire academy. If you were to sit and go one through twenty-seven, eight, whatever it is, you could theoretically challenge the state test to be a certified firefighter. We, we have some other resources and, and training aids in there, but that's kind of the gist. Our new members are coming down and they're training, and we're getting login hours. So, so the benefit of what's happening is very difficult for, for us to train these members, especially when they come in brand new, to spend the time and start them at A and move them forward. It, it just takes a lot of time to go from orientation to a, a, a train where you can enter in to an ideal H environment in full gear. There's a lot of stuff that has to take place. What this does is they're able to go in there and watch the video and do the DVD training part, and then we can take them out, you can see there's the fire truck, that, that's the truck there. Then we can take them out there and do a little practical exercises, some hands-on, and we can move through that training modules a lot quicker when they can self-study and then do that. So that's what's going on there. This is our battalion six. This is our strategic command vehicle. This will be mounted in the back on a slide, it'll pull out. This chalkboard right here will track companies through the hazard zone, wildland fires, whatever, for strategy and accountability. All this stuff right here that you see, this holds a laptop where we'll be able to on-scene look, say for example, Google Earth, where we can get a footprint of a building that we're dealing with, or we can get a footprint of a geographical area on a wildland fire, see where our houses are, see where our protected hazards we need to go to. All the rest of this will be full of literature and, and resources, hazmat books for hazardous material research on the scene and all that. So that's our command, and it'll also, it will also be used for the accountability, to track firefighter location in a hazard zone. So in the event a firefighter gets in trouble, calls for help, we know where to begin looking and sending resources to their aid. This is the cooling trailer that the city purchased for us, and we sincerely appreciate it. The summer has just been so good to us. It, it hasn't been, but it, but we all know the time is coming. We've got, from a volunteer standpoint, this is one of the projects that we do have up and coming, because this is what we're calling the cooling trailer. Well, we're gonna like, we're gonna title this for radio designation as the rehab trailer. So we're looking at mounting hooks and some different, some different types of hardware, where in the winter, we can actually bungee cord tarp's and set up some of them jet, the jetted heaters, and, and we can even use it to warm up in the winter, and then obviously in the summer, it has the ability to provide a cool, a cool-off atmosphere. So that's our rehab. We kind of want it to be married to that Suburban that we're gonna call support, and that's what's gonna pull it to the scene, and we'll have the Suburban full of aspirin, benzene, all those things. When we get out on these long events, we can, we can have some comforting stuff that, that we need without, maybe hopefully, you know, somebody saying, hey, I gotta go home, I got a headache. Well, maybe we can on-scene fix it and keep them in the game. Anyway, so that's the goal with those apparatus, that equipment. This is the day room upstairs, in the firefighter's day room, the bedroom that we kind of looked at was over here. We are going to turn that into a physical fitness station. We have the treadmill, the riding bike, some free weights. We're gonna section off that area. Now, staff will be put under a physical fitness policy, which will bring us into compliance with NFPA fifteen eighty-three, which is firefighter health and safety, which requires a, mandates a physical fitness program for a paid fighter. So we'll get that going. That, that's a project up and coming. And that brings us to our analysis, and the commission, y'all have this. For the month of September twenty twenty-one, we made seventy-six runs, and, and that put us, that's our busiest month so far. That, that got us up there a little bit. That brings us to five hundred and forty-nine runs for the year. As of right now, we're over six hundred. As of today, we went to six oh two, six oh three. But this is for the, just the month of September. Average calls was two, two point five three calls a day. The incidents within the city are sixty-two, and the county is eleven. So a lot of activity for, for, for us, it, it takes place within the city limits. But we, three times, we went to our mutual aid to help neighboring community, and we installed two smoke detectors this month. That's great. I love it, I wished it was twenty-two, or it tells me everybody's got one. So that's what we'll start pushing, you'll start seeing that message coming out as we get into the colder months, but we want, if you need a smoke detector, please call us, they're free, and we will install them. But we made ten incidents after ten o'clock at night and before seven o'clock in the morning, and we just look at those as more than likely, we had to wake up and go, go visit, go visit. And these, these are volunteers making these calls also, not just that. And we just looked at those as more than likely, we had to wake up and go, go vis, go visit them. And these, these are volunteers making these calls also, uh, not just staff. So. Uh, one structure fire that we attended i- in the month of September, and I want to say that was in Cisco. That one, this one here was in Cisco about two o'clock in the morning. Uh, they had a working fire. Uh, when we made it over there to assist them, we still, they had pretty much fire knocked down, but we did a lot of overhaul work for them. Uh, we got, we, we were wearing air packs and, and getting it done, helping Cisco. One grass fire. So you can see again how the weather and the, the summer has been very nice to us. Typically right now, uh, we could be doing one to two to three of those a day, depending on the, the, the weather. So those, those calls are low. We had two vehicle fires, uh, thirty-five times we went out to assist one of the medics on a, on an EMS. And, uh, five, uh, motor vehicle accidents in the month of September. And twenty-six times we went out for some sort, some type of miscellaneous, uh, assist the general public. Those, those rate, there's really, really hard to categorize those. They're, they're just, they're just, uh, all over. But we are rolling out, uh, for, for, uh, you know, all these calls typically come through nine on one. So, so they're public sit. And then six false alarms and investigations. And that brings us to our total pretty busy month for September. In, uh, membership, we voted on six members this month. Uh, we're missing one in there, but, uh, here's our newer, newest members. Uh, there's three here getting sworn in. Uh, this is Cheyenne and Michael Atkins, who's the son of Jason Atkins. And, and I tell you, I, I, I think this is something fantastic to talk about. This is two father-sons that we have on the department. Um, so I'm not sure of the exact date, uh, about a week and a half ago, uh, about five, four in the morning. It was a major accident out north in Morton Valley and both father-sons responded. And they, they, they left the station in two trucks, father-son pairs going out to, to, to answer that call. I thought that was pretty impressive. It's kind of, kind of a stop for a minute and would have been a good Kodak moment. Uh, Cheyenne and Alondra. Alondra is our, our, one of our newest members. They can, uh, contest to utilizing the computer rooms and, 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 and moving forward. So we're, we're just excited about what's going on with our membership and, uh, the, the guy in the back, Hunter. Uh, he is a currently a Fort Worth firefighter, lives, lives out, uh, north of town. And, and so he's, he's also going to be part-time with us and, uh, and, and he's going to be a big asset being a Fort Worth fireman. He's already kind of helping, doing some training and different stuff. So sharing his knowledge. We got a lot of good things going. And that's it. I appreciate your time. Stay with us on the, the Facebook and, uh, we sit out, that's where we will, uh, advertise any of our current events. And also our public safety messages will be put out there. November the seventh, we will change the clocks. So we encourage at that time to change the batteries in your smoke detector when we change those clocks. And if the firefighter can help any of the citizens or anybody doing that, leave us know. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Could you, uh, Tony, could you go back to slide number one?
Absolutely.
Sorry to take up so much of y'all's time, but I'm just curious as to why the heck Charlie is the only one that's heavy?
I would love to answer that.
He's not wearing a tie. It looks like he's in trouble.
That is Charlie right there. That's a good display, Charlie Torres. Uh, one thing I, I failed to mention, we talked about the, would you go real quick and I'll, I'll go set up on the, on the study? So we wanted to display to you guys the computer room and what we're doing and how, and, and the, and the beautiful progress is taking place there. So in, in the creation of this PowerPoint, uh, in, in the command staff, we're discussing, Charlie came up with today. We will be dedicating that as the Gordon Woolen Memorial Library. It will be that right. So it's really informal right now because it all kind of took place through just some good ideas and some beautiful thinking. Uh, in our next meeting, uh, we, we've done an informal kind of a straw poll of the membership. We'll be back, we'll be motioning that and passing it. And, uh, you know, Gordon passed away in June. Uh, this year, July, uh, this year, thirty-five year member. And so, uh, this, this allocates actually two rooms. We have the Greg Simmons training room and now we have the Gordon Woolen Memorial Library. Well, I started inviting that, but we'll, we're gonna, we'll have a deal. There'll, there'll be a, there'll be a event for that.
Ribbon cutting?
Oh, ribbon cutting. Yeah, we'll get, it'll be real soon. We're.
That's good.
We'll get, yeah, the assignment. So, but that, I, I failed to mention that. I apologize. I got so excited about what's going on in there or something. No, I think it's a good thing. Get any further question?
A lot of good stuff. Anything else for Keith Williamson? Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it.
Maybe we adjourn.
That makes a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Second from Ben. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries.
What is that? You were throwing?
I didn't know if he was going to go to municipal court or not.